Let me see here. 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 Let me see here.
I can go?
Yes.
Welcome to the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings. Today is Tuesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-one. It is six oh three P M. This meeting will be held in accordance with the Governor's new executive order, November dash two-nine dash two-zero issued on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, regarding the open meeting requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act in an effort to help avoid the spread of COVID-nineteen, to maximize transparency and provide public access to city council meetings. Darlene, would you please lead us in the flag salute? Everyone, please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two, Rachel Hernandez. I can see you. I can't hear you.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Four, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Uh, any conflict of interest from any council authority member or staff, whether the direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the con- conflict at this time. Are there any conflicts? Seeing none, we're going to proceed to public comment. Before I do that, if any, if you would like to join us to make comments now or on any business item that we are about to consider, please refer to the last page of this agenda for the comment procedures. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council L R A Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there is no public comments.
Thank you. We're going to go on to presentations. Item seven point one, summary of face mask handout program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh, this item is a presentation, so we don't need any direction at this time. However, I will state that I've, we've heard from members of the community in addition to comments that council has made, uh, you know, uh, city council meetings over the past, uh, year, and we're well aware that the, uh, mask program was highly successful. We're very proud of it, and so we're, we're working on, um, either some internal funding to continue that or federal funding when it comes down the, uh, the pipe for, for, uh, continuing the program. But we thought that since this was a fairly unique program, at least here locally, um, we would share a little bit about how it went and give you a little bit of data about what we, what we learned, uh, throughout the process. So as, as council knows, um, the city received CARES Act funding, uh, both from the state and county. And one of the first programs, uh, directed by the city council was to create a mask program that was free, um, to anyone who needed masks. And so, uh, initially what we did was we kind of dipped our toes in. I think we started off with an initial purchase of five or ten thousand dollars in masks. And, um, we started out by making sure that those were given out to care homes, senior housing facilities. And, uh, we partnered with a couple of our faith-based organizations and nonprofits, primarily food giveaways, uh, to add to their stock and, uh, allow them to give out masks as part of, a part of their giveaways. And it was very successful. Pretty quickly thereafter, after just about the first, I don't know, couple months, uh, we became aware that it was, um, not enough. There, uh, you know, many of our nonprofits operate a day a week or two days a week. And, um, while that gave some of the community who visit those the opportunity to pick up those free masks, there was a whole nother segment of our population that don't visit those, um, uh, nonprofit or faith-based organizations that also wanted to have access. So, uh, Gabby Hernandez in our office, uh, spearheaded this. Uh, we set up a, uh, two-day-a-week, I believe, uh, mask giveaway. And, uh, we, initially it was, uh, kind of a trick to figure out how we would set it up so that it was safe for folks. Um, and we, we made a couple of changes over the six-month period or so, um, but eventually got into a pretty good groove of the community knowing exactly when the program was going to be open. Most of the time when we would open the doors at four-thirty, we'd already have a line of folks waiting, um, for masks. Um, and, uh, so just to give you some num- well, in addition to masks, it wasn't just masks. It started off as just disposable masks, and then as we got into it, we realized that some people wanted reusable masks. Um, there was, we didn't go too deep into different kinds of styles of masks, but we had a variety of people, for people to choose from. And then we realized we also needed to have masks for children. And we also picked up some safety and sanitization kits that we gave out, um, to the community that had little temperature, um, uh, items, so you could check your temperature. They had hand sanitizer, uh, wipes and a bunch of other, uh, P P E that would, uh, you know, be an additive service to the community. Um, and then, uh, so once we started kind of coming up towards the very end of our, of our CARES money, we started thinking about, um, how many masks we had given out over this time, because it just became a normal practice, uh, especially for Gabby. Uh, and it looks like, based on some rough math we did, uh, we handed out and gave away for free more than seventy thousand masks during the term of about July twenty twenty to, to the first of this year. Um, and it equates out to roughly ten thousand a month. You'll see that the, we really ramped up in, in October, November, December, um, as the virus got much worse. And, um, our goal along the whole process was to try to eliminate any barriers that anyone in Riverbank might have to, to getting masks. And what we learned was very interesting, that some people really liked the disposable masks and some people really preferred the, the reusable ones. Um, and, uh, we, so we tried to accommodate all needs with the, with the hope that we were just, you know, encouraging safe practices from our residents. Uh, overall, we spent roughly sixty thousand dollars on masks. Um, so you can tell by the seventy thousand dollar figure of masks that it comes out to, uh, slightly less than a dollar a mask. But, uh, in staff's opinion, it was a well, well worth the investment. And we had heard just over and over and over again from the community how much they, they appreciated and valued the service that, uh, I, I can't say definitively if there was another program like this, but I'm not aware of one, at least locally. There were plenty of mask giveaways, but not a consistent program where you could count on, on that, uh, week in, week out. One little detail that we thought was sort of interesting, and Gabby actually came up with this today, was we wondered, based on council district, how many people visited our mask program? Because when you come to get masks at the city hall location, we'd ask for, you know, your address just to verify you're a Riverbank resident. And, um, so we were able, without, you know, including any identifying information, to get a general idea about geographically where they were located. So I'm going to share a little infographic, if that's okay. There we go. So, um, you'll see here that, um, District One, District One is in green. District Two is in orange. District Three is in brown, and District Four is in dark green. And this number here on the left-hand side is not a, um, per-person number, it's families. So what we found doing the program was that people would send down the head of the household or, uh, somebody was getting off of work and they would drive by to pick up masks. And they would, basically, we'd ask how many people in your household, and that would tell us how many masks we needed to provide them on a weekly basis, basically. So you see here in July, uh, in District One, almost sixty families, um, uh, from, from that district. And you see slightly lower but similar numbers in, in all of the other districts. You move into October, November, it starts to increase by about, you know, ten, fifteen percent. And then into the December-January timeline is when we were really the busiest. You had, um, hundreds of families during those two months coming and getting personal protective equipment. And what I like to see in this chart, because we really didn't know how that was going to geographically represent the city, is although some areas participated a little less than others, in general, what you're seeing is you had pretty good participation across the board. Um, and probably not overly surprising, District One was, was first just because it is in District One. Obviously, there's a need in that location, and a lot of folks would, sometimes they would just walk down to, to the giveaway. So, um, overall, we're very proud of this program, and we hope that, um, it did its part to try to help, um, uh, you know, stop or slowly slow the spread here in Riverbank. And to the extent that we can find a way to recreate it, because we know that masks are going to be part of our lives, at least most of this year, not all of it, um, we're going to try to do so. So we wanted to just provide you an update on that. Happy to answer any questions that you'd like to ask, um, but I don't think we need any actual direction at this time. Oh, and I also have Gabby on the line, in case you'd like to say anything to her.
Vice Mayor Revere.
Thank you to Gabby. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I just thought it was pretty interesting, the trend there from, uh, July all the way to the end of the year. And, uh, yeah, I echo Mayor's sentiment there, um, uh, to Gabby. Uh, tremendous work. Thank you for staying safe and all the work you did for this program. Thank you.
Gabby, I know it was a joy for you, uh, and thank you, and I want to echo what the Vice Mayor was saying. And Sean, that was a great program. Um, when we can re-initiate it, uh, we should. Um, but we should, uh, try looking at a way to, no direction here. This is just conversation. Now you can get a shop clinic here every week.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I'd just like to thank the community for participating in the program and trying to see our vision and trying to control, um, the, the virus and trying to, you know, help each other out. So I just want to thank the community for, um, supporting the program.
Councilmember Campbell, I would just like to say I agree with everything that Councilmember Martinez, our Vice Mayor and Mayor, uh, Mayor said, and Gabby, you've done a fantastic job. I'm very proud of you.
Okay, any other comments? Rachel, you can chime in too. Everyone else has.
I keep muting myself, but yeah, I just want to say thank you to the city team and everybody because, um, we're leading by example over here in Riverbank.
And not to pat ourselves on the back too hard, we were the first to do this, followed by Modesta, when they keep saying what Riverbank's doing, they want to do it, try doing it bigger and better, and they can't. So everything that we have done for this and for, uh, some of our other COVID programs or CARES programs, they, um, everyone else wants to emulate, so they're looking to us for their leadership. And I'm glad we're providing great leadership. Thank you again to Sean, to your staff, and to the community. Okay, with that, we're going to go to the consent calendar. Um, consistent with item eight point one, wave readings. Item eight point two, approval of January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, city council and local redevelopment of thirty minutes. Item eight point three, acceptance of the pavement restoration project twenty twenty, completed by Dryco Construction, Inc., and authorization to file a notice of completion. Item eight point four, a resolution to approve and adopt the revised twenty twenty-one City of Riverbank Measure L expenditure plan project list. And item eight point five, recommend approval of resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two funded by S B one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of these items? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items as presented?
Councilmember Campbell, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as it is stated.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented by Councilmember Campbell and a second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Members Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And Kathleen, thank you for your, uh, inputs on both, uh, um, uh, well, all, all the items, but especially on the Measure L projects. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. You're welcome, Mayor.
Item nine point one, provide direction to the city staff concerning an amendment to the development agreement by and between the City of Riverbank and Pacify Cooperative, it's probably Pacafa Cooperative, Inc. and California Cooperative Corporations Doing Business as Flavors to extend the terms and make adjustments to the public benefit schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm going to speak to some of the financial components to this, uh, but to kind of lay out the, uh, preliminary negotiations as well as, as what, um, is on the table for council to consider this evening. I'm going to turn it over to the City Attorney Nubia Goldstein.
Thank you, Sean, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. What we have before you tonight is an item, um, where staff seeking direction from the council on one of the, um, current operative development agreements for one of the cannabis projects that's ongoing in the City of Riverbank. If the council will remember several years ago, when the council first approved the structure for a pilot program for, um, commercial cannabis, one of the lead projects was, um, the, uh, retail cannabis dispensary known as Flavors. And that business has now been operating with the city for, for closing up on, on three years that the development agreement has been in place. Um, this is a good time to bring it back to council for discussion, because not only has the developer approached the city about making some changes to their structure and, and within the development agreement, but their development agreement had an initial term of three years. And so we're, we're rounding up the time for that, and so this is, it's a really good time to, to bring it back for direction. Um, normally, the way that we would process a amendment or an extension to development agreement would be through the formal process of taking its planning condition for recommendation, presenting it to the council through an ordinance for first and second reading. And most likely, we, we would have to do that for this project. But, um, in order to, I think, um, string But in order to, I think, streamline the process, we're bringing this out tonight for direction to make sure that we have the council wishes encapsulated as, as best we can in order to move forward with that amendment, considering that the developer has also requested some modifications to the arrangement. So again, the development agreement for Flavors is structured in tiers. And that's not uncommon for the other operations that the city has approved as well. Specifically, the way that the public benefit works for Flavors is that it's tiered off of approval of the project and in essence requires a minimum payment of a specific amount or based off of a percentage of their gross receipts. And so the current tier that Flavors is operating under is an eighteen thousand dollar minimum payment a month or five percent of gross receipts, whichever is higher. And so there's been fluctuations in the market. It is something that city staff has been monitoring over the last several years. Again, there's been many changes at the state level. We're talking about an industry that just as of a few years ago was completely illegal. And a lot of it was really encapsulated in the black market. And so now that the state has created an overarching regulatory program for cannabis, is one of the reasons why the city moved, well, is the reason why the city moved forward with regulating it. So the, the numbers that the city has, that we've presented as part of the staff report, are important because the request from the developer is really predicated off of an ongoing relationship with the city. They want to continue their operations, but they feel that the current benefit, public benefit structure that they have to pay to the city is not really conducive to a good business for, from their perspective and within their business model. And they're asking for a modification to basically decrease the, the public benefit amounts. Historically, over the last three years, on average, they've averaged about fifty, it's fifty thousand dollars a month, I believe Sean, Sean can, can clarify if, if that's incorrect. Again, there's been a recent bump in recent months. Again, I probably predicated off of activity based off of COVID and lockdowns and all of that. It's, it's really unknown at this time whether that will continue or not, but that is a component and the, I guess, the most healthy months in terms of revenue component have been in the last, I believe, the twelve months. So what, what the operator is requesting and what we're bringing before for the council for a recommendation and direction is they're requesting a cap, essentially a certain amount that they wouldn't pay above and beyond. Again, remember that the structure right now is predicated off of five percent, eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars a month or five percent of gross receipts, whichever is higher. So it really is open-ended, just depends on how well the business is doing. The developer is requesting that the city instead impose a cap so that they don't pay a certain, not to exceed a certain amount. What staff has considered and is provided as part of the staff report for your consideration is a fixed amount. So it would be at thirty thousand dollars a month over the next several years. Again, we'll be extending, extending the development agreement beyond what it's currently at. The proposal would be for a three-year term for the business to continue operating. It's basically the same amount of time that they've, they've been at this point. And staff is comfortable bringing this forward for a recommendation based off of several months of discussions with the operator and working through some of the numbers with them, going onsite and seeing how the operations are going. And again, the viability of their business within the, it, it's still a continue, a continuing challenge to really determine how cannabis, the cannabis market is going to continue in, in the state of California. There are a lot of changes, most likely at the federal level, that are coming on, on board with the new administration. There's changes at the state level as well with lots of legislation. The most recent one that I, that I can recall is the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which oversees the overall structure of cannabis regulation in the state, is looking at implementing regulations to make it easier for these businesses to deal with financial institutions, which has historically been a challenge for them. So lots of changes, but within that context, staff feels comfortable recommending this structured change to their development agreement so that Flavors can continue operating under the basic terms of the agreement. Those would be the only major changes. Everything else would remain the same. All the conditions of approval associated with their ongoing operations under their conditional use permit would stay in place. And staff believes that the, the good relationship that we've had with the operators and their, and their legal team will continue in the future as well. So that really encapsulates what, what we're looking at. And I'll turn it over to Sean if there's additional information related to some of the financial concerns.
Yeah, thank you very much, Nubia. So the, the big question, of course, is what does this new cap mean to the public benefit program? And before I address that, I want to just add on a couple little components that went into our thought process here. We have to remember that when Flavors was first approved, I believe it was the first or second legal cannabis dispensary in St. Louis County. And so the market that they have to operate in now, three plus years later, is totally different. You know, Modesto's program is up and running pretty much every city in, in the county, with the exception, I think, of Waterford and Houston, and possibly Newman, have a or many dispensaries. And so we went from being the first or second legal location to, to now being part of a fairly large pack. And if council remembers, one of the philosophies that we had back when we originally approved the first development agreement was to try to set a rate that at the time we thought would make Flavors competitive. And one of the things they articulated to us is that because of the changing nature of the, of this industry, that not only complications and, and very high levels of excise tax that come from the state make it very difficult to operate, you know, and, and turn a profit, but also all of the other components, including public benefit that come out of, you know, them trying to operate their business in the black. So it's understandable because, you know, over time, this whole industry has changed and matured. And we think that over, the reason why we like the term and we think that it's, it's fair to recommend the thirty thousand dollar number is that we think that over time, we will see, we will likely see many different dispensaries locally unable to survive. And from a strategy perspective, it may be the best choice to have a favorable development agreement for our number one operator in Riverbank to continue to be successful so that we are knowing we're going to be receiving a specific amount of public benefit over time and eliminate or at least minimize some of the unknowns that may occur during the next three years. So that's one little editorial comment. For the, for the, in terms of the public benefit program, one of the big questions is, well, look, you know, we're funding a number of programs out of these, out of this fund. And what does it do to us financially? In general, what it does is it will continue to provide enough public benefit separate and apart from any of our other cannabis businesses to maintain the current ongoing costs that we have coming out of that fund. And some of that includes cameras and some of that includes deputy salary. And some of that includes code enforcement. In addition, it will have, it'll leave a little, roughly forty thousand dollars in excess of that, which can then be put into the fund balance and council can continue. And that fund balance is well over a million dollars currently. And the council can continue to fund special projects or recreation or other safety projects as was defined under the, the policy. And we have now a fairly diverse set of businesses here in Riverbank that are cannabis-related that are also contributing to that fund. And so we, we're not overly concerned about significant negative benefits to that fund based on a lesser agreement than we had previously. If it means, and we do think it does, that we're getting a more long-term, sustainable business in Flavors that will stick around longer. So, so that is sort of the justification and the thought for the staff recommendation. I will say one last thing about Flavors because as council may recall, it was a very controversial decision three years ago when it was originally approved. But throughout the entirety of this agreement, Flavors has operated, has, has run their business professionally. They have made payments on time and correctly and have been very transparent about their revenues with us throughout the entirety of the, of the contract. So there's been no, no criticisms or violations of that during the entire, entire period. So that sort of sums up the lengthy discussions that we've been having and be happy to answer any questions you might have or thoughts.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. Just, just for clarification, Nubia, so the, so the amendment applies to just the top tier, correct? So it's the, the minimum of the eighteen, eighteen thousand or it caps, it caps at that gross receipt? Is that correct?
We're eliminating the tiered program for public benefit under an amendment. So the, the point would be to make it a little bit cleaner and just have it be a thirty thousand dollar payment per month, every month for the next three years.
No matter what, just thirty thousand? Got it.
Thank you. You know, this is probably the only industry that, that we're taking a good advantage of. Flavors was one that came up honestly. They expected great sales and they're getting it. They also expected California to do the right thing about the excise tax lowering it to fifteen percent, which they intended to do. But as Nubia pointed out, the Bureau of Cannabis Control is manipulating a lot of the laws. They also manipulated the proposition that was passed. And they tried taking advantage of, of their authority. And Riverbank was one of the first ones to sign on. They, they were unsuccessful in that un, unmanaged distribution, if I may say that. So instead of going down to fifteen percent like they were supposed to, they went up to, Nubia's a twenty-seven percent excise tax.
In essence, yeah, that's what it come out to be.
So at twenty-seven percent of your profits go to the state and you can only recoup the fifteen percent that they, the C, that the Bureau of Cannabis Control has mandated to the business. So no matter what, they're losing thirteen percent of anything they buy, they cannot recoup. So one of the reasons why it's being lowered or requested being lowered is to give them at least the ability to continue operating. And I don't think any other cannabis shop that or dispensary that we have in the city can even meet what Flavors have done. I'm in favor of, of, of supporting this. And, and I want to make sure that Flavors understands as the landscapes changes, especially if it's against them, that we're here to be a partner with them. They were our first partner. They're doing great. But if it changes, come to us and let's see what we can do to keep them in business. We were surprised at a fifteen thousand dollar a month, I believe it was. We didn't think that bubble would last three years. Well, it is, for, at least for Flavors. It may not be for others. So consider it carefully. I'm in support of it. And I wish Flavors continued success.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. So Mayor makes a great point. So just an idea here, say hypothetically, their business, something happens and the business, you know, collapses or something happens to, to, to their, their income there. So for, in order for them to continue to operate and they're stuck at that thirty K minimum, maybe it would make sense to have maybe the lower minimums in, in, in a tiered structure still in the one, two, three. Just an idea.
Instead of doing that, let's, let's just have them come to us and say, hey, this isn't sustainable again. Can we talk about it?
There are provisions, Nubia, correctly if I'm wrong, but there are provisions that we can build into this. And it's, I'll be honest with you, it's happened with other cannabis businesses where if for whatever reason they can't perform, it's not a do it or don't do it kind of scenario. You know, the council, if, if we received a request that, that they needed to see an amendment because they were in, you know, some type of financial trouble, I believe that the council can reconsider this at any time. Is that right, Nubia?
Absolutely. And, and one of the reasons why staff was comfortable bringing the proposed structure just at a fixed number for the rest of the term is that historically speaking, they haven't had numbers this low or that low, I think, since maybe the first year they were operating. So again, it, it's been, we, we've looked at, at different scenarios and this, just based off of the numbers so far, seems to be something that they could probably hit. But yes, to answer that question, there's, we can always bring it back if there's problems in the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, I'd like to make a couple of statements. Being as I was there when this entire thing was completed, there was a lot of friction in the community. They thought that it would be a horrible thing to have this dispensary come. Flavors has been over backwards to prove them wrong. They have been nothing but a good, professional business. They've stuck by their guns and they play this money over the time. And they've often participated in community things that are going on. They've given money to the Historical Society. They've given money to the other activities that have gone on. And they've attended them and they've been nothing but a good business and a professional business. Unfortunately, none of the things that a lot of the public thought were going to happen have happened. And they've been an outstanding business as far as I'm concerned. And I agree with everything the mayor and the vice mayor have said. And I support going ahead and keeping the thirty thousand dollars is adequate.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I'm glad that, that we have them as a partner. And I think that we take a look at extending their contract for another three years, their agreement, and then I'm glad that we have an understanding that if anything goes down south, that they can always come back to the city and look at us as a working partner and we can move forward to another agreement on whatever is needed to make sure that they're successful and the city is too. Thank you.
Thank you, darling. Councilmember Hernandez?
I agree with this term as well. And I guess on the more optimistic side, hopefully business does get better and increases to numbers we've seen before. And, you know, we can have conversations both ways with the business.
Thank you. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve the direction as provided?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'll make a motion to approve item nine point one as stated.
Councilmember Campbell, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Vice Mayor Uribe and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, item nine point two, an update on Proposition sixty-eight grant project.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to request that every single member of the council cross their fingers for this entire staff report because we're going to need all the, all the good luck we can get. Sue's been working on this for a couple of iterations. And so she's going to step you through the latest one. And we will be prepared to, to make this application in March. So we want to just, any final feedback you'd like to give now would be the time. And I'll hand it over to Sue. You're muted, Sue.
Okay, sorry about that. So, um, Mayor members of the council, I wanted to, uh. Give one more update because we're closing in on the, the due date for the grant. Um, it is due March twelfth. And I know there's been some articles in the newspaper about some cities applying for the grant and some cities not. And I just wanted to kind of come clarify a few things and give you a, an update on, on where we're at and. Um, I know councilmember Hernandez, um, probably, um, is. Wanting to hear a little bit about this, so, um, thought I'd give a quick update tonight. So proposition sixty-eight again is the statewide park development and community revitalization program. And it is the largest park-related grant program in California history. So it's a really big deal to people in parks and rec. Probably something not that isn't gonna come up again. Um, over one billion in funding, um, has been. Distributed between two thousand six Prop eighty-four grants and two thousand eighteen Prop sixty-eight grants. This is the last round of funding for this grant, so it puts a lot of pressure on us to get this. This is it. This is the last round. The minimum grant amount for this project is two hundred thousand. The maximum amount is eight point five million. So it's huge. Um, couple of the things that I wanted to kind of, um, let you know a little bit more detail on is. For this grant, there's a lot to it. There's a lot of detail to it. But two of the criteria that are the main criteria for eligibility is that the project. That the project that you work on, um, has to have less than three acres per one thousand people within a half hour. Half mile radius of that project site. So ours has, our community center park has one point two one acres. So we meet that. You also, not also, but or have to have a median household income of be low fifty-six thousand nine eighty-two. We meet that as well. We are at fifty-four thousand in that area. So the good thing about this grant is we meet both of those, um, main criteria, so. So there are two rounds of the applications. Round one, as some of you know, we applied for and it was due in. August of two thousand nineteen. That grant was submitted and I think it was really good. We actually got a site visit, which you have to be. In the. Uh, probably good graces of people to get a site visit. So we did get that. What I was told when we found out the bad news that we didn't get the grant is it was mainly because. There were just other areas that are in, were in greater need. So some people fell further down on that median household income when some. Maybe some people had no acres of park at all. So what I've been told is this time around, it just depends on what that pool of applications looks like. So there were sixty-two projects funded on the last round, um, out of over four hundred applications that were submitted. So round two, um, this same grant with some adjustments will be resubmitted. When I say with some adjustments. They changed the application. It's a lot more difficult this round. Um, it's very intensive and it's all online and they want you to jump through a lot of hoops. So. I, I have it pretty much down pat and almost ready to go and, um. If we don't get it, it's not because we didn't give it our best shot. Um, the grant due date again is March twelfth. Um, what they're saying is even though they had, um, delayed the, the due date. It usually, it was gonna be due in December and they extended that so to March. But they're saying they're still gonna let us know late summer. So we're still on the same timeline that we would have been. So, um, we should know. Before too long. Um, a couple of other things I wanted to clarify is the grant project must include at least one new recreation feature. Um, that's really a, a high priority of this grant. Park renovations are eligible as long as there's at least one new fe- feature. So what's good about ours is we have. Both renovation and new features in our, in our park design and our proposal. Uh, the park amenities need to be open seven days, uh, per, per week. Um, but, and that's what I wanted to clarify in case somebody had read something that was in the paper recently. A seasonal pool is approved, um, if there are other amenities. So at our park, we'll have the playground, the new playground, we'll have all the other amenities, uh, that I'll show you in just a minute. So the seasonal pool does, does meet that. The other, um, grant requirement is the cost for amenities cannot limit attendance for those unable to pay. And that's the intent. They want to make sure that those amenities are pretty much free for the most part, at least the bulk of them. Uh, for people in the community that cannot afford to pay. So this is kind of one, one of our conceptual designs and you can see, um, here is our, um. Pool that exists. Basically that pool is now over twenty years old and it needs to be replastered. The decking does not meet ADA standards. And when that pool was first redone, it was when I was first hired. I was basically hired because of my aquatics background. And so that was twenty-one years ago. Um, it had been redone, but the locker rooms are back from the sixties. They're the original. Nothing was ever improved with those. So, um, that's part of the plan. Moving the playground to the west and adding another learner pool with a water feature to have the new, the new feature. The playground would be fully accessible, um, inclusive. We'd make the, the picnic shelter look a lot better and let me just, I'll go to the next slide. I have some. Uh, this is kind of a image that looks kind of neat. It would kind of be the new look for our pool area. Um, the old locker rooms would be demolished and new would be built on the opposite side of, of where they are now. Kind of a, an image of the playground. What a lot of people that attended the community meetings thought would be neat is here you see the exercise pods. Um, where parents could exercise while they watch their kids play on the playground. So that was a, uh. Suggestion that I thought was pretty good. Here's another shot. So, um, just kind of gives you an idea of, of kind of the dream we have and that. What could be done, um, on that, that park acreage. So if the city was awarded the grant, there would need, need to be a management plan because as we build things. We know that we have to support them and we have to maintain them, um, which we've learned at Jacob Myers Park, we had a good management plan. We've been able to manage that, um, to where it's pretty self-sufficient. Aquatic programs, um, and parks like this do not, um, bring in a lot of revenue. But, um, we do have a management plan that is part of the grant that we have to prove that we have a capacity to do that. Recreation swim would be free in this management plan. And open seven days per week. During the season as required by the grant. But the revenue that would come in would be in the morning and the evening and off hours with swim team, which is a moneymaker. Swim lessons, scuba lessons, aquatic fitness and pool rentals. So that would offset some of the costs for the maintenance. Um, also sponsorships for our programs like the Sharks and Mermaids, um, would be secured as well as, uh, other. Funding sources to offset the costs. There would be additional funding needed from the general fund, um, just to support the additional pool. And we would have to figure that out and, and I've done a, um, management plan for that and a budget as well. So it, it all looks pretty good. Um, past success, we've had good luck. Um, and we have a good track record with the grant agencies. They know us. They do come back. Like they come and look at Jacob Myers, they come and look at the skate park and they come and look at. Some of the other things that we've received grants for and they actually are happy at how we've maintained them. Our city does maintain what we have the best we can. It's all about the points and I'm getting us as many possible points as we can. Our chances are good. There is a lot of competition, but, um, it's like playing the lottery. I mean, it's a good chance to win. And if we, if we do, it'll be, it'll be a good deal. So. If there's any questions that I can answer?
Are there any questions of Sue on this?
I don't, uh, councilmember Barbara Martinez, I don't have a question, but just a couple of comments. Sue, I like the concept and you know I'm all about being inclusive with our, our playground equipment. So I appreciate that. And, um, I. I am strongly suggesting that we do something about our landscaping because we've got a lot of holes in that community park. I've broken my sandals over there. Um, so I just hope that we can smooth it out and get some of those potholes filled and. Um, make it look real pretty. That's all. Thank you. But good job on the grant. I hope we get it too.
I'm gonna agree with, uh, councilmember Barbara Martinez. All, all of our parks and our. Fields need to be. Evened out. I don't know if, uh, you can. Do some, something about that, but that's besides what this proposition money is available. So expecting this round of the remaining, let's say you minus the numbers from four hundred. You may have fifty-six, uh, parks that are gonna get, um, get selected. And Sue, you have put us in a great position. My only comment, and it's not a direction, it is nothing. The more that you have, um, children out in the sun, the more I would like to see shade covering. On a lot of their, their equipment. I know the concept didn't have the shade covering. But I know in your mind, you wanna have the shade covering to protect them for, for the, um, the future. It's only gonna get worse for a while before we can make it better. So, uh, anyway, I wanna thank you. Is there any other comments, questions?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. Sue, is there any way we can lower the basketball, uh, basketball hoop so I can dunk in the future?
Yes.
No, I'm only kidding. No, I think the, the, the project looks great. I got my fingers crossed, uh, just based off the numbers and, uh. The, those that were funded the last time are, are, our, uh, hopes are looking better. So fingers crossed for you. Good job.
Councilmember Campbell, I'd like.
You may have a, a step stool there for him.
Okay.
Go ahead, Cal, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, first of all, uh. I can out dunk you, so you shouldn't be sweating it. So second of all, I wanna thank Sue for all the hard hours that she's put into. And long hours to do these grants. They're not easy to do and I think it's wonderful what she's doing. And I will also agree with the mayor and councilmember Martinez that we do need to level out our fields. So people don't stumble and trip around and whatnot. I think if, if this passes for the community center park, that it'll be a great thing for us. Thank you, Sue.
Welcome.
Hi, councilmember Hernandez, this is so exciting and I can see the passion you have for it, Sue. So I'm, uh, we're rooting for you and it's great to see that all the space utilized, like, um, the basins here are, are awesome. All the open space, but, um, it's great to see it all utilized as, as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Okay. Uh, Sue, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, we look forward to you, your award. And I'd like to see that being executed, you know, by, uh, uh, wet season this coming year. Smile, you deserve it. All right, we're gonna continue on with item nine point three, countryside park development.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, um, this is a very interesting item. Sue is going to share a PowerPoint here in just a second, but, um, this is a very, a fairly unique issue. I don't think, oh, first of all, it's not every day that we build a park in Riverbank, um, or anywhere for that matter. This is, uh, the way we're kind of thinking about this is that, you know, we have an opportunity to do something a little bit different. And probably more in line with what was set up in our Parks Master Plan. And, and, but it came at an unusual time as these things do. The project had started before we adopted our Parks Master Plan, but it's probably, the park will actually be built sometime thereafter. Uh, here in the near future. So Sue's gonna step you through the, the concept of the preferred design. And then I will take over towards the end and talk a little bit about the financing component of it.
Okay, so Mayor members of the council, Countryside Park is, um, on the east side and. There's gonna be three developments, Countryside one, two and three. Countryside one is, um, well underway. And it includes a one acre park, which is flat. And if everyone knows that I, I really like usable space and the, the one acre. Is gonna be very nice for that side of town. Uh, the next two developments are gonna be basins. Um, with little or no dual use. We're thinking maybe down the road on one of them, we could put maybe a walkway around the top. With some exercise equipment or something, but, um, really this one acre park is gonna be the main acre park. At least for a while, um, until more larger developments come in the future. So as Sean mentioned, you know, we were working on the citywide park master plan and in that master plan, we had. Specified certain standards that we wanted in our future parks. And it happened to be towards the tail end of that citywide park master plan completion that we really got into working on this park. So. The new park standards include things like artificial turf or pour-in-place instead of the wood fiber. Which the wood fiber surfacing on the playground, you have to replace and top off. And if you'll notice, it gets compacted down. And it, it causes some issues. Um, we really wanted to move into a different type of surfacing on our new standards. Shade, as the mayor mentioned, was very important to us. And the common things that are showing up in new parks nowadays are picnic shelters, um, and half basketball courts. Those are some of the main amenities that people tell us that they want. So the, the thing about this park is when we developed it and put in the new standards. We were, we still are in the process of updating our system development fees and our capital improvement program. And making sure everything drives and everything matches. So, um, we do have to make that happen. But just to kind of show you the park, um, this is what it would look like. It's a very nice park. There's shade, the artificial turf. Some of the components like the shade structure. The reason those are so important is a lot of the. The housing developments that are, are built now have very little or no backyard. So we're seeing more and more people coming out to the parks for their family gatherings, not during non-COVID times. But, um, their baptisms, their family reunions and even wedding receptions. They'll bring out tents. And we have to really monitor that. Um, but at least people have. Some picnic shelters to have some gatherings and, and the basketball court and just a, a nicer park. Some parks, neighborhood parks want a restroom and some don't. Like at Silver Park, when we met with the community before that park was developed, all the neighbors said they did not absolutely. Did not want a restroom. And we were trying to say, well, you know, with those amenities, you might want a restroom and they were for sure didn't want it. After it was built for a few years, we started getting phone calls that they wanted a, a bathroom at Silver Park. So we were able to do that. And it's worked out really well, but what we decided at this park is we would develop it without. Because a lot of people are against it. And if it comes to the point where people are requesting it, we can cross that bridge when we get there. Um, this is kind of the new swing, uh, bays that you see now and it has the intergenerational swing. Um, which you can't see the other side of the, the swing here on the right, but it's where two people can sit and facing each other. So that's kind of a fun thing. And then the inclusive swing, uh, like we have at one of our parks now that's requested by a lot of people. Is, is in this, um, as well. And this is a semi-inclusive playground. To where it has some, uh, inclusive part, parts to it. So I'm gonna hand this part over to, to Sean because it's more of the. So I'm going to hand this part over to, to Sean because it's more of the, the dilemma we're in now where we don't have quite enough money, which is seems like we always have that problem. But, um, and we need to decide whether to move forward with our new standards on this project or downsize the project and update everything to where we, um, can do our standards later.
Great, thanks Sue. Uh, so in broad strokes, I'm going to do a quick crash course for the council and community that haven't lived in the world of system development fees, more commonly called impact fees. Um, it's, uh, one of the things that we do fairly regularly here, um, you know, with any building project. Um, council sees these regularly when they come forward, typically to ask them to be waived, um, or deferred. But in general, in a, in a normal housing development, um, non-subsidized housing development, um, there's a set of fees that each home pays on their building permit, each building permit, that addresses impacts that those, that this new home and the future occupants of it will have towards our systems. So systems meaning water, systems meaning sewer, system meaning public safety, systems meaning a general government, just system meaning roads, and in this case, systems meaning parks. So the way that our, uh, system development fee program is designed is each home pays roughly four thousand, uh, forty-two hundred dollars in a park fee when they file their building permit. And, um, so that amount, when you spread it across all of the countryside phases, and there are three of them, comes out to about four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars change. Of that amount, the way the system is designed, thirty percent of that figure is supposed to go towards neighborhood parks. And then seventy percent of it is set, set aside for regional parks. Regional meaning large-scale parks like Jacob Meyer. It, it, the classic definition is like a Jacob Meyer's, a sports complex, a Castleburg is another example. And it's critically important to know that these monies can only go towards expansion of services. So frequently we'll get like requests that, uh, you know, from members of the public like, hey, for example, a couple picnic tables at Jacob Meyer's Park are broken. Can we just use this fees to replace them? No, only expansion of services. So we could expand the picnic shelter at Jacob Meyer's Park, creating more capacity, but we can't replace what we have. So there's rules and, and detail about how each of these can be used. Um, commonly in small scale and medium scale projects, the developer really has two options. They could pay the fee. Um, and we then can use the fees to go build the park. What more frequently happens, because there's economies of scale that can be reached because they already have crews out on site, is they will develop the park for us based on our design. And whatever that amount costs them, as long as it's within the, the range of what they've paid in their fees, they'll re- request credits back. So we, we, we've done it both ways. They can basically get a credit on their building permit so they don't pay the park fee, or they can request reimbursements out of the program. So either way, they either pay the fee or they build it and request, uh, the funding back. So that, you don't get it both, right? So in this particular instance, um, uh, well, you go to the next slide, Sue. Thanks. Um, the, the overall estimated cost for this two-standard park um, is seven ninety-one, seven thirty-five. So there's a gap of about three hundred and nine thousand dollars. That's not including the seventy percent set aside for regional. So there's a few considerations here. The SDF program allows the city council and the city council alone to allocate more funding to a specific project within the program at your discretion. Uh, in this particular instance, we think there's a fair argument to be made that because this is the only park that exists east of Claws, uh, it's certainly the first and probably will be the only park, at least for a little while, within the variety of small subdivisions that are being built over there. Um, and also that it's the first park built on the, uh, east side of the railroad tracks here in Riverbank in decades, many decades. Um, that we could make the case that this actually does sort of, uh, operate as a regional park because of the lack of available parkland elsewhere in this area. Now, it doesn't, it maybe is not a classic example that's, you know, a thirty-acre park. But, um, in terms of amenities and, uh, ability for people to really use it, it, it does probably meet some of those standards. So, um, as was identified there at the bottom of the slide, the funding gap we're looking at is, um, three hundred and nine thousand, uh, dollars and change. We have about three-quarters of a million dollars currently in the park system development fee account based off of collected building permits over, over the last couple of years. And so you have funding in there to, to fund it. Um, go to the next slide. So you basically have two options. Uh, you could move forward with the current park design and the new park standards and authorize us to negotiate gap funding with a reimbursement agreement with the developer and we'd sit down and work out all the details. Um, know that if that is your decision to move forward, what, what I have to tell you, um, as a matter of policy, is that when you spend more money on a specific improvement uh, within your program than was allocated previously, what it ends up happening sometime down the road, and it may be fifteen years, who knows? There will be less money in the program to identify and, and build some other improvement that was of lesser priority, uh, you know, at this time. So, uh, that said, I don't see a lot of risk here because, uh, we're in the process of updating our fees anyway, and so we're going to be amending the project list, uh, to make, kind of similarly to how we did with traffic a few, um, months back where we look at projects and really critically think about whether they're ever going to be built or whether there's a better way to allocate those resources. So I think in general, the risk is fairly low, but there, there is, is some risk that you might come up short very far down the road. Um, option two, which is fine as well, would be to downscale the design to fit the amount of funding we have available. I still think that it needs to qualify under the regional so that we can have enough to at least build a, a minimally standard park. Um, but you're, you, we won't have the same amenities. And it'll probably mirror what we see in a lot of other, um, lesser developed parks we have in, in Riverbank. That doesn't mean that we can at some point in the future expand out there. You could, uh, but our general opinion and why we're putting this in front of you tonight is you get so few opportunities to give this direction during the development process. And we have an, an opportunity here to, uh, you know, sort of transition into a different city standard for parkland development. Um, and so those are really the two options you have. And then I suppose if there's other kind of hybridized versions you'd like to suggest, those would be fine too. Um, it is, there are one more slide, Sue, is that it? Uh, questions or comments? So if you happen to answer any you have, and I also have Maricela here, who's the, who's the true master of the system development fee program.
Sean, how many houses are in those developments?
Um, one moment.
Did you freeze or you're just frozen?
No, I, uh, I'm just running, I'm running the figure real quick here.
Okay, while you're doing that, the reason why I'm asking is that I have tentative agreement with the county to authorize the regional parks fees and neighborhood park fees that, uh, the county collects to be returned to the cities if we have a regional need. And we designate this as a regional park. For each home that you build, you'll have three hundred and forty-six dollars per park, about per home that you build, going to the regional park fee. If you have a hundred homes, okay, so you're going to get about thirty-four thousand dollars.
Um, There's a hundred and twenty, roughly a hundred and twenty units.
So that's around forty-one thousand. That's a, a, a little bit of a pool. And I think that if we use everything that we can, keeping it as a regional park, I believe that we should be able to manage it. Um, you can't, you, you can't minimize the parks for one side of town and maximize it on the other side of town. You have to be able to maximize it on both sides of town. And as we are designating that a regional park, there's going to be some neighborhood parks that'll be contributing in the future funding. So, um, I'm not doing anything but discussing, but I think that would be a good way of going as we move forward. Comments?
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, um, I just have a, a slight concern that, um, we have to come up with the funding that's needed to, um, you know, to keep it going. But Riverbank is known for its beautiful parks and I think that, that is, uh, one of the things that make people want to live in Riverbank because they can take their families out to the parks. And I'm glad to see that we are forward-thinking, but I just have a concern that, you know, it may be difficult for us to come up with that funding. Um, you know, it's just kind of hard to believe that the last time a, a park was built in Riverbank was thirty, forty years ago. I mean, just to concede that.
On, on this side of the tracks.
Yes, but what we need to do is to, if we can, to go ahead and get the funding today because it's only going to cost a heck of a lot more in the future. So I'd like to see us to move forward with it, if at all possible.
Darling, um, if we designate this a regional park, uh, the other neighborhood parks that are going to be built in the Crossroads West will be contributing to the regional park, which is that park. And I believe that will cap, capture or encapsulate almost all of our funding. And if we go to the county with not only those homes of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty homes, plus the homes that we're going to be building on the Crossroads West, the PFS that will be paying to the county, in other areas, we can designate fifty percent of our PFS to the county going to the parks. So I think what we should do as a council is get, um, some knowledge on the PFS and then talk about how we can, uh, keep paying the PFS, but making sure that we get fifty percent. We collect for the county, so we pay the county with an agreement that the county says fifty percent. They get fifty percent and we get fifty percent. And that will go, um, uh, to all of our, our regional parks. For example, fifty percent would, uh, uh, provide us six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, which would allow us to build this park, plus put some towards our regional park that we're going to be constructing in the Crossroads West. So as, as we talk with the county on this tax sharing agreement, we have to ensure that, that, uh, we're, the taxpayer gets our, our funding, uh, as well as they get theirs. Additional comments?
Councilmember Campbell, I agree with everything that you said, Mayor, and I also agree with Councilmember Martinez. Uh, I think we need to do it now. It'll be more expensive to do it later. And our parks are a big thing in our community and this is going to be the only park on that side of that town. And I think we should go ahead and put it together with option one.
Could you, um, show the, both the options again?
And Mayor, uh, just one thing to add, um, that you mentioned that triggered a, a thought for me. Uh, it also is important to remember that there are at least two or three other, I think three other subdivisions on the east side that are imminent. Um, some are actually owned by the same developer, um, that will be building and paying that fee as well. I think if I had to, I, I, it's very difficult for me to ballpark it if I was based on memory, but it's somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and twenty units, not including what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, I think it was close to two hundred.
Okay, so, uh, we can co- uh, cover it through the development. It may be a phased, uh, payment, but, uh, I think that we go, uh, I don't think we're here for a vote, are we?
A vote at least on which, which option would be best?
Yes, a vote especially that you're talking about funding would be appropriate.
Okay, then, uh, before I go any further, is there any public comment?
There is no one wishing to speak, Mayor.
Very, very good. So I'll bring it back for further discussion and/or recommendations to move forward with either option one or option two.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, I, uh, make a motion that we approve option number one.
Vice Mayor Uribe here, I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve option one, that is to move forward with the current design and, uh, contribute three hundred and nine plus thousand dollars. And we have a second by Councilmember or, or Vice Mayor Uribe. Roll call please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, Sue, you have your marching orders. Get it built tomorrow.
Right, awesome.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you to all the staff. I know a lot of you are going to turn off your cameras now, but, um, we have some great movement in this city and it's all directly contributing to the quality of the staff. And, and I tell you, to me, I can't say anything. Uh, I, I cannot be more happy with, with the way we are performing. So with that, we're going to go to comments. First is ten point one, uh, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have actually a number of comments, uh, just, uh, really quick updates. Um, as council directed, we have been very aggressive and it's taken, uh, the, sort of almost top priority for us in preparing for eventual submittal for the E, uh, Emergency Solutions Grant for our temporary shelter. Um, we are, uh, looking at properties, we're looking at the grant requirements. The county has actually been incredibly helpful, especially the county planning department, in helping us figure out the concept and actually discussing the concept with the state officials to be sure that we are going to be able to, um, follow all the appropriate funding guidelines. Um, so we will, we will be, uh, you know, like the, A, A-plus student on the first day of school with our homework done as soon as that, uh, application is open. Um, and we'll be prepared to submit it. We're also having deepened discussions with the Housing Authority, whether they end up, uh, helping us with, uh, the build of the actual project or some other hybridized version. Um, they have, uh, they've had meetings with us a couple of times a week, so more to come on that very shortly. I'd like to let the council know, although some of you may already, that next Wednesday, the seventeenth, at six PM, uh, we will host a, for small businesses, well, businesses in general in Riverbank, a Paytech, uh, excuse me, Paycheck Protection Program Round Two and Rad Card Training for businesses that may be interested in applying for that. There's still time. Um, and we have two experts, um, in addition to some other folks on a panel that will be simply giving out information to our businesses, explaining to them how the, how the process works, um, advising, or at least explaining to them what are the qualifying and disqualifying characteristics you have to have in order to, you know, apply and be funded. Um, and this was actually something that Councilmember Hernandez and Vice Mayor Uribe sort of, uh, helped coordinate the original, um, contacts with these, uh, experts that have donated their time to give out this information. We put the program together kind of in, in cooperation with the city of Patterson, who's doing something very similar. And again, it's, uh, uh, we were simply going to host it on the Zoom platform, but it'll really be a, a- town hall that, um, these two experts give information to the, to the businesses, and, and then there'll be opportunity for those businesses to follow up with, um, additional questions and, and needs for assistance. So, uh, if we're going to, we have marketing materials that we put, we put together today. You'll start to see that pushed out on our social media. And, uh, any sort of posting or crossposting you'd like to do would be more than appreciated because we'd like to see folks, uh, zoom in and, and ask questions. Um, we, we're very concerned that, um, Riverbank businesses were not as well represented in the first round of PPP as, as they could have been. Um, and so they missed out on, on some funding they would have qualified for, and we want to try to remedy that this time. Also, um, we're going to record the, the webinar, and so we'll post it to our website. So for whatever reason you can't make it, uh, all of you business owners out there, you can simply just click on our website a couple days later and you'll be able to watch it. Um, more to come on that. Uh, number three is, um, Crossroads West, thanks to Kathleen and Donna, is, um, very close to, um, achieving a grading permit to move forward with, um, the beginning of their project, so there will be some type of ground baking or ribbon cutting, and we'll get info to the community on that, uh, as soon as, as soon as weather allows, is what I'm told. Um, the, uh, next meeting, barring any sort of major issues as we go through the numbers, uh, Maricel and I will be bringing you a mid-year budget, um, that'll have updated revenue and expenditure numbers, as well as some requests from various departments, um, for council to consider. The, um, we are, uh, because I know this has been brought up and asked a couple times there, uh, there's been some interest, um, and it was suggested by council during the many discussions we had on electronic signage last year, that we really, that while we like our, our new signs, we'd like to see some of them recreated on the east side and south sides of town. Having those discussions currently a little more complicated because we don't own as much property on either of those sides of town, but I'm working with a couple property owners to see if we can work out an arrangement, and I'll bring that back for council to consider. Um, and then, uh, finally, um, we'll talk about it more during mid-year budget, but one of the priorities we've had is not only in development, um, planning and building and development services, but really across a number of other departments is, um, trying to do some targeted staffing, um, increases because we are aware that, uh, the development that we have, both on the east side of town and the west side of town, in addition to many, many other projects in the pipeline, um, we want to be sure we can meet the customer service demand of all of those customers that are going to be walking in through our doors or at least emailing us. And, um, and some of that's going to require a little extra help. So we'll have that discussion, uh, next meeting, and I think that sums up my updates, unless there's any questions.
Any questions of Sean other than, um, Circulus? Sean, we're going to talk about Circulus?
Sure, I'm happy to talk about Circulus. Circulus is, um, uh, is a recycling manufacturer that takes used plastic, uh, that probably would end up in one of those big, um, trash fills that's in the middle of the ocean. And they distill it down to resin, and then they are able to sell it to various manufacturers as a recycled product. Um, and they have chosen the Riverbank Industrial Complex as their new facility where they would like to start the first of many plants, uh, that they'll be building throughout the country, uh, here in Riverbank. And, um, while I don't know all of the detail because it's still kind of in its infancy, we've been working very hard with them to try and uh, get them necessary approvals to move forward, um, with, uh, their project. We have been, we have run into a few issues with, um, Army and EPA, and we can uh, discuss that at another time, but, um, in general, very excited about them as a lieutenant. And when it's appropriate, and I don't think, uh, we're quite there yet, they will want to do some sort of statement and, and ribbon cutting at their facility. But we continue to have quite a bit of interest from green energy and environmentally friendly businesses, um, out at the plant, and we're seeing that mature, uh, pretty much every month.
One of the things that Sean's not saying is that the city, with his egging and the way that he writes, has been able to secure some good agreements and cooperation with the Army Corps of Engineering, Army BRAC, and hopefully we can get the same with the U S EPA Region Nine. So Sean, thank you for your urging egging, and with Congressman Harder and his staff, uh, I think that, uh, we're going to see some quick movement, not only for Circulus, who is investing heavily, is going to produce a lot of high-quality jobs. All local, although one is from Modesto on the east side, but hopefully he'll move to Riverbank. But the most of them will be from the Riverbank area. Um, and, and this is going to be, uh, furthering the way that Sean has it structured. As we move forward, it's going to help, um, our, uh, conveyance. I think the Army is now coming on board. And, and Sean is working very diligently with the lawyers. Sean, you need to pat yourself on the back more than you, you do. Okay, with that, uh, Councilmember Hernandez, would you have any? Sean, would there be any other staff?
Uh, none, none this evening.
Okay, Council, uh, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, um, there isn't any new updates with, uh, Love Riverbank, but I did get, um, a couple messages from other council members and more residents who are interested in joining. Um, hopefully next meeting I'll, or for sure next meeting I'll have some more updates, but, um, there was tax season has been busy, uh, uh, during the day with United Way, and I think, um, Councilmember Barbara Martinez can speak a little more on that, too. We're going to be doing some free services for, um, tax services coming up, um, but that's it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell? Cal, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Just like to say that I'm going to get my second shot on the fifteenth of, uh, this month for the virus, uh, for the vaccine, and we're looking forward to that, my wife and I. But even though we are doing, getting the vaccine, we still need to remind everybody that they still need to wear their mask and follow the guidelines because there are new strains of the virus that are coming at all times. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Vice, uh, Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Um, let's see. So tomorrow I will be attending the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance, or Shaw, meeting. It's tomorrow at five thirty, and it is open to the public through the Zoom. And, um, the VIDA program that Councilmember Hernandez was talking about, which is the Volunteering Come Tax Assistance and Tax Counseling for the Elderly, Free Tax Preparation Services for the community. Uh, yes, we will be at United Way. We have some specific dates. Um, you'd have to call United Way and schedule, uh, your appointments. And we are also in the libraries of Oakdale Riverbank and Salida, excuse me, and Community Services Agency, um, also on Hackett and Crow's Landing. So all of those locations, you do have to have scheduled appointments. Um, it is a very, very, um, rewarding experience to try to help someone, especially because a lot of people were out of work last year, and this will give them hopefully, uh, some kind of boost um, in their economic, uh, need. And then, um, just talking a little bit about African-American history, which we all know is this month. Um, the theme is, um, the African-Americans, uh, and the vote. Just looking at the past a hundred and fifty years that it has taken, um, you know, it's more of a struggle for African-Americans to be able to participate in democracy and vote and to have a, a say in our democratic process. So just, um, you know, I'm just very proud to be an African-American and, um, to do what I can to help others and bring them up through the, the ranks. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this morning I attended an informational webinar. Uh, it was held by Vaccinate All Fifty-Eight. Uh, it focused on the rollout for people experiencing homelessness and frontline staff. Uh, I'm, I am excited about that new mass vaccination site that was, uh, it's supposed to be announced that's coming to the Central Valley. Uh, so keep a lookout for that. Uh, we're still dealing with that supply shortage. It's, it's slowing down the rollout. Uh, but I am encouraged by President Biden's administration. Uh, they'll be boosting the supply of vaccines by five percent to community health centers. And the state allocations have increased twenty-eight percent, so we are going in the right direction. Um, this Friday, uh, I do look forward to participating in the SB thirteen eighty-three, uh, open forum by Jillton Solid Waste Management. It'll be, uh, this Friday from ten to twelve. And then finally, I was given the opportunity to participate in the county's, uh, Evaluation Committee, uh, for the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program Funding. Um, so I'll be provided with all eligible pro- uh, proposals. I'll get to review and score those. Um, so I do look forward to learning that process, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on the vaccines, I'm glad that they're being rolled out. This is a progressive scale from, uh, I guess it was from November through now, as they get more experience in the way they, they can produce more and more, increasing, uh, will get more. One of the things that is, uh, disconcerting with the county is the way their partnership is. We have the Valley Health, uh, uh, Golden Valley Health Organization that could be given shots, but they decided to go through C V S or through Save Mark or some of the other organizations, uh, who are not yet set up that well to administer the, the, the vaccine. But, uh, I'm on that committee and I'll, I'll address that. One of the things that I was also concerned, as you brought up there, Vice Mayor, on the vaccines, uh, Oakdale is saying head of line privileges for, uh, healthcare and teachers. Now, teachers are very important, but there's a lot of other industries that are mandated to remain open that, uh, aren't getting the vaccine, and they're ahead of the educators. So, um, what I would like to do, Sean, I'm going to ask you to push, but I'm going to push on my Thursday meeting, is to get some type of vaccine mobile here in Riverbank. Uh, we have a lot of individuals who cannot make it out anywhere outside of Riverbank, barely walk to where, uh, a vaccine would be held, but we need to, to move on that. And I'm going to do my pressure, you do your pressure, and maybe we can pressure Congressman Harder uh, to do, uh, his, uh, favors for the city of Riverbank. Uh, I, uh, Sean and I talked with Senator Eggman and his, and our Chief of Staff uh, on some of the major projects that are happening. And as they, as our major projects start rolling out and we start having some, uh, fanfare with them, we're going to be inviting not only Senator Eggman and, uh, 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 Assemblymember Flores, but also Congressman Harder and any of the others, uh, that are interested. As we move forward with some of our, uh, eco-friendly businesses, we'll even ask the, uh, Governor's staff if they would like to have some participation. So with that, um, yeah, I think that's about it, all I need to do. With that, I think we're going to move into, uh, closed session. At this time, before I go, uh, making the announcement, the public will have a limit of three minutes to comment on all closed session items as set forth on the agenda prior to the City Council L R A Board adjourned to the closed session. Closed session item eleven point one, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven Bravo one, title City Manager. Item eleven point two, Conference Real Property Negotiations pursuant to Government Code five four nine five six point eight, property A P N zero six two dash zero three one dash zero zero five through zero zero seven, agency negotiator Sean Scully, City Manager, property negotiator Ametis Inc., under a negotiation price term or payment of both. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
Mayor, there are no public comments.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion of this meeting has concluded. The City Council and L R A Board are going into closed session. The report of the closed session items will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Any interested in receiving what was reported on any item may contact the City Clerk by calling two oh nine eight six three seven one nine eight or email cityclerk@riverbank.org. Thank you for joining us tonight. The re- next regular city, next ready, regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday twenty-one at six P M. And it'll be a good one. This will, we have the mid, uh, year review. We're now adjourned to go to the closed session. We're now adjourned to go to closed session.